Because I switched it to push to talk. Why isn't anybody answering me? Alright, welcome everybody. Um, I really appreciate you guys taking some time out of your day to uh, to hang out and listen to what me and your other department heads have going on. As well as uh, taking the time out to uh, share with us hopefully some thoughts and comments. There'll be after basically each kind of little section for those of you that haven't been with uh, us for a town hall meeting before. Basically, um, we'll have somebody present something like coming up first is gonna be Vampy and he's gonna talk about the A team, he's gonna talk about um, some changes that are going on. Some developments that he's had, et cetera. Uh, after Vampy's done, we'll have a, a brief little, you know, period where if anybody, you know, has like a question or two. Then go ahead and ask him, we'll do this after, you know, each person presents. If it gets to be a little long, or it ends up becoming a side conversation or something like that, be prepared for me to step in and, and just say, alright guys, you know. We got a lot to cover, we'll move on to the next topic. But I want you to kinda, that's not saying conversation's over, it's just over for right now, cuz we've got a lot of stuff to talk about. After the whole thing is done, I want Vampy to. Pyro, thank you. I want Vampy to uh, jump into a room. Uh, I want Izanagi to jump in a room, I want Pyro to jump into a room, Space Lord to jump in a room. The League of Legends guys to jump into a specific room, and so that way if anybody has any lingering questions or something that they haven't figured out yet. Um, or just need some help with something, they wanna volunteer for a job, et cetera. We'll kinda just split off into little subgroups after the big meeting to resolve any, you know, major thoughts or questions. If you're watching this live on the stream, thank you, um. If you are, if you know of somebody who was unable to make it, please let them know that this was streamed and that they can catch up. And if they have any thoughts or questions afterwards, they can be sure to grab me or any of the other leaders, and we'll do our best to make sure that they're up to speed. So, any thoughts or questions in regards to the format for tonight's town hall meeting? Bert, yay! Alright, so, um, one of the first things that I wanted to bring up is. Recruitment and stuff, and I'm actually, I'm gonna pull up a chart for you guys, give me just a moment. So, I've been seeing a chart like this a lot lately. And this is the uh, the admin control panel, um, for the forums, and this shows the number of registered users that signs up per day. And last week, we had a awesome breakout week, we had ten or so, four, five, two, five, two, four. These numbers look really low, but guys, this is actually super, super awesome. If you look at just the uh, where it is, registration stats, and go. Yeah, that's everything. So, from March eleventh, we've had some really good weeks. That's right in the beginning, we had a lot of registrations, of course, as we transferred from the old forums to the new forums. But this last, look at this, look at this last month. All of May, last half of May, and early June, these are amazing recruitment, these are amazing recruitment numbers, guys. And uh, I just wanted to say, I'm really proud of it. However, it's only half the battle. If you will, um, there are a lot of members that have signed up for the community. But have not shown up for practices and, and things like that. I bring this up because we're getting to a point where we're having to um, trim the fat, if you will, on the in-game, the StarCraft in-game clan tag. So, making sure that you're at, your practices on a regular basis, making sure you're laddering. Um, not necessarily constantly, especially the B teamers and such, but the higher up you are, the more important it is that you ladder. We had about four or five people today that uh, we went through and cut to uh, to make some space for some new recruits possibly this week. And most of those people were accounts that hadn't laddered in twenty or more days. We now have the resources and the means to look at this kinda stuff, and as we're moving towards a more competitive team, we're gonna be. A little more exclusive on who gets the clan tag. That said, we're not closing the doors to anybody as a community member, we're of course gonna maintain the Clan Infinity chat, um, A-team chat and B-team chat. But it's getting to a point where we don't have enough spots for everybody, so we are going to start, um. Like I said earlier, trimming the fat. Does anybody have any questions or comments on that topic?
Is there gonna be a limit, like, what's the limit?
There's a one hundred limit for the in-game clan tag.
Alright.
Right now, we're sitting at about ninety. We were at a hundred about forty-eight hours ago, and me, Vampy, and Space Lord found some people that we could kick. We also found a few people that we knew, like. Your, one person's account was on it, and so was his smurf account. You don't need both accounts to have the clan tag.
Yeah, I could take some of mine off right now, actually. I have like, four accounts in this thing. Fuck, just to talk to people.
And sometimes he likes to be incognito.
Do we have a point where we break up and like, if we start getting more than a hundred people, a hundred serious people that we don't wanna kick? Do we, um, do we want to?
Make a new clan tag, probably.
Yeah, that's what I was about to say.
We should do what like Clan Zero does, and do like the X, and like how they have like different branches for their stuff.
We're prepared for something like that, I guess. We're prepared for something like that, if that should occur, then the line is gonna be divided between the A and B team. Is pretty much how we're, we'll probably end up doing it. Um, I know a good chunk of the clan tag is taken up by bronze and, uh, not bronze, by uh, gold and platinum players. Which is definitely not a bad thing, cuz I know a, a lot of those guys have a lot of potential, they're on a lot, um. Then again, we had people like Clonak who were on it, and you know, we love and know Clonak, we know and love StarCraft, but. They're not playing for us competitively, so, you know, keep an eye out for things like that. Any other thoughts or comments?
Got one.
Go ahead, go ahead.
What does that mean for uh, casters? Like, I don't tend to ladder at all, I play custom games in StarCraft, but. I do consider myself a partial StarCraft two caster.
Um, Izanagi, Space Lord, um. Vampy Worm, Pyro and I will be sitting down at some point and deciding what ratio to give out. Obviously, we need to have some form of leadership in there, I mean, um, I'm comfortable, you know, not having it myself, but you know, we, we gotta have at least Jerome or. Or somebody in there leadership-wise, and that also applies to the other departments, we need casters that are gonna be able to represent us, we need. Um, recruiters that are gonna be able to represent us, so just kinda as a, a general thought. You know, like twenty-five for this team, twenty-five for that team, ten for administration, ten for casters, ten for recruiters. Ten for, you know, outstanding community members, you know, however, something like that, we will develop a system when we need to.
How many is the, the gold and platinum players, do you like, they make it to masters or diamonds and like try to get on the A-team? And the A-team becomes very full.
Um, we can address that here in just a moment. Any other thoughts on uh, the restructuring topic, if you will?
Go on, Bert. Oh, okay, my only comment was, if we do create another clan tag later on down the road, it would probably be for the A-team. And not just the A-team, but the top of the top A-team, because there's your masters, but then there's your top masters and. I guess Vampy would talk about that more than I would, but, yeah.
Well, this, this change within itself will be a project, will be a development. We're not at the point where we need to start drawing these lines in the sand, I'm glad that everybody's got some good ideas for it. Sounds like we're gonna be able to make that transition very smooth when it does happen. I just wanted to bring it up and let you guys know in case you jump on one day. And somebody you saw at pla- practice three months ago finally gets on and says, hey, where's my clan tag, you can tell them why. Um, Vampy is going to, and Vampy's going to elaborate here in a little bit on his new structure for the A-team. Um, some of the goals and requirements that he's gonna have for his team, and I'm sure stuff like that is eventually gonna move down the road to the B-team. Um, but that's some stuff that uh, we'll be getting to in just a moment. There is, I also wanted to take a quick moment to, to break down the leadership structure. I know we have a lot of new people. And it's really good to see you guys, thank you so much for uh, for joining us. So, I just wanted to give you a quick synopsis of how everything works here, hold on a second, I drink some water. If you uh, if you go to the uh, the homepage, and go to leadership. Or, no, info, is it info? I think it's info, yeah, go to info. You have a breakdown of our management. We've got Jerome, Kratos, myself, and Gazerbeam, we're your four leaders. Uh, Infinity Gaming, for those of you that don't know, we try to structure ourselves around a nonprofit organization. Every single penny that we take in from our donations, we turn around and spend back on the community, either offering it as prizes, or. For incentive for in-house events and things like that. We're currently raising money for t-shirts, so if you'd like to throw some money towards that, we'd greatly appreciate it. But uh, obviously, there's a lot more to be done in a community than four people would ever possibly be able to do. So, we have different department heads. We've got uh, Vampy, he's gonna be the, he's the head of our A-team, Space Lord, he's the head of our B-team. Uh, we currently do not have a chief Dota two administrator. We do not have a chief StarCraft administrator at this time either, because Vampy Worm and Space Lord are doing a pretty good job running their stuff. And we don't have a Dota administrator, because at this time, we don't have a competitive Dota team.
I nominate Shadow for chief Dota administrator.
I have no objections to that. But it's a lot of work. Izanagi is the person that you would go to for any casting concerns. And Pyro Panda would be your head of marketing and recruiting. And if you have any issues with the website or the forums, please get ahold of myself, Morse, or, bleh, myself, uh, Kratos, or Enilex. Um, best way to get ahold of me, so that I know that it's an actual official request, and something that I need to work on. Is if you send it to me in a private message on the forums, that's how I work my, that's how I, I work my pipeline. I stream all my work through there, uh, with the small exception of outside.
What did you do?
I just edited the channel into meeting. So, each of these, each of these captains and department heads is, is supposed to have a staff underneath them effective last week. Some members are um, still missing, if you will, uh, some lieutenants and some help. So, if you are interested in helping the Dota two, and if you're helping, bleh, if you are interested in helping Dota two, if you're interested in helping out the League of Legends group. Or if you're interested in helping um, any of the StarCraft side, or the production management, or Pyro Panda for recruiting and marketing. Uh, or you're looking to do anything regarding graphics and design, um, please hang around and um. Each of those uh, department heads will be doing a quick little note and letting you know what's up, and how you might be able to help them out.
Does anybody know what the dew point means?
It's the point at which the condensation, the air liquefies.
What does that have to do with the?
We got, we have the freaking hurricanes out here, I'm checking the weather and I'm like.
Okay, humidity, UV, dew point.
Alright, one last thing before I shut up for a little bit and let somebody take the mic from me. Um, you guys, as we're starting to grow, um, it's gonna become more important for. Um, the department heads to be focusing on more high-level stuff, uh, such as uh, recruitment, sponsorships, um, finding LAN events for you guys to compete at. Et cetera. We're gonna be looking for you guys to really be stepping up and. Being leaders within yourselves and your small group of friends, I know we already have a couple dozen cliques between all of us playing. So, please hang out, um, make sure you're making new people feel welcome. If you see something that needs to be done. Don't wait around for somebody to ask you, just step up and do it. And uh, if you don't feel that you have the tools to get it done, please let us know, and we'll see what we can do to help you out. One final note is uh, we will be putting out, as part of our growth, we are going to start putting out a quarterly report. As part of that quarterly report, um, oh, it'll basically kinda be this format of each department head providing some insights and tips and stuff. On what they've done over the last quarter, as well as what they're gonna be doing over the course of the next quarter. Uh, for those of you that aren't familiar with the term that I'm using, um, a year is broken into five fiscal quarter, or four fiscal quarters. Yes, five quarters. You have, you have uh, January through March, May through June, July through September, October through December. And each, at the end of every one of those three months, we're gonna put together a report for you guys, so you can see the strength of your community, how it's growing. Uh, how we're doing financially, how our Twitch numbers are, all that kinda fun stuff, so keep an eye out for that in July. Um, that's really it for me for now, I'm gonna go ahead and pass it on over to Vampy.
Hey, alright, so if you guys open up the file browser in the channel, does anyone not know how to do that?
Yes, I do not.
Okay, if you open up TeamSpeak and you click on the A-team meeting and right-click, there's a thing called File Browser. Or, yeah, open File Browser, click on that, and you wanna like double-click the A-team department icon document.
For those of you having trouble with it, I have it.
That is the updated one with all the new current members, and good stuff like that. I will get right into it, we have the Infinity Pro team, or what else I'm going to call it. Whatever else I'm gonna call it, um, it's probably gonna be Team Infinity, but that will be decided later. That's gonna start it off by end of June, their roster's already set, as you've seen in the document. What else I wanna get in here? Clan Wars, I made a lot for myself for Clan Wars and scrims, you know, it's kinda just Excel, Friday, and one coming against Warrior Nation. Those, the Warrior Nation one's gonna be for diamond players mostly, and that's at least, that's the goal of it. It used to be.
When are we gonna have B-team tournaments? So, you have, it says must stay in the top twenty-five of your masters, that's like, that differentiates between division to division, like.
It, it's not seven, seven, that's just a rough for me to give out. This is gonna change in the points pretty damn soon.
Okay, I was just wondering since.
I'd like to note that I encourage Vampy to um, to put this together. Wow, I'm breaking stuff. Wow, breaking stuff, okay, so I'd like to say that I encourage Vampy, this push to talk was fucking me up. Um, I'd like to note that I encourage Vampy to come up with something like this, because um. As we're, we're starting to recruit, it's going to be important for us to be able to see who is committed and who is meeting um, their objectives on a weekly basis. Um, I don't want you guys, especially at this point in time, to look at this and go, oh shit, well, I have to stay in top twenty-five masters, or they're gonna kick me out. It's not really so much that, as it is, you need to stay within the top twenty-five masters, or you're gonna have me and Vampy coming up to you saying, what's going on? You know, do we need to get you some coaching, do we need, you know, do we need to, do you need to be practicing more, how often are you laddering, et cetera? Think of these as a guideline, um, to help you have a good training regimen, and to make sure that you're pulling your weight with the team.
Um, I'll, I'll get back into talking.
Sorry about that.
Well, it could've been way worse. Yeah. My lieutenants right now are Gugak, Spamnub, and Herb, Herb is an on spam, and is here, AKA Freeze.
Hello.
Gugak is sick, I don't know what the hell he has, or what's going on with him, but he told me he was sick. And I'll be going up on his end a little bit later in the meeting. Anything else that I want to get out there? Herb and Mumbo Jumbo have eaten a LAN tournament, couple, was it a week ago, I think, or some, it was a week or a couple of days ago. And they placed rather high in the tournament, so congrats to them, if you hadn't seen the post on it. Recruitment wise, as you guys noticed, we're seeing a lot more masters in the chats, and TeamSpeak. Um, Infinity will be a top fifteen right now, and it will dwindle down as people commit, make commitment to the team. And it should roughly be uh, ten members or so. For that team. I am very excited to see the upcoming talent that we have, a lot of talented players. That we have in, in right now for A-team, which will soon be divided up. So, question time.
Is there any plan to enter us in any kind of team league?
Yeah, there is, once we get the funds for it. Unless it's free, that'd be good to go, putting us down for free.
Well, what the, the underrated team league, like, what about that, how do you, you know anything about that?
Well, it's, it's in its, it's in the final week right now, so if they start it up again, I guess.
Yeah, but did it cost money is what I'm asking.
No, it doesn't. But I would, I wouldn't join the underrated team league right now.
We should start our own team league.
We would get stomped.
Getting stomped is okay?
One of the big things that's held us back from being able to pursue team leagues, and being able to pursue LAN events and stuff like that as a team. Has been lack of organization, um, from our high-level players. With the proposal from Vampy, um. With the proposal from Vampy in regards to the requirements, it's going to help us get a better understanding of who's committed and who's gonna be able to help us out. And be there on a regular basis, so we can start making commitments to things like team leagues. It's hard to sign up for an event if I'm only sure if half of my people are gonna be able to participate, you know?
No, I know exactly what you mean.
I did have a question for Vampy, um, as we're shoring up the, the wall, if you will, of what is gonna be the top team. How is the structure of the rest of the A-team gonna work out?
That's gonna be the B-team, well, AKA B-team, I really don't know what to name it, it could be Academy. It could be for our little masters and diamonds. I'd rather not call it B-team, because I'll get confused with the other B-team that we have, I'll mostly just be Academy.
May I make a proposal?
Yes.
Why not keep the uh, the A-team under, you know, um, diamonds and masters and up? And once you get your team solid, then we'll draw that line in the sand, and then we'll start developing a roster for the Academy. And then whoever's remaining, um, for lack of a better word, uh, benchwarmers, if you will, people like me, will, will just be members of the A-team.
Can I make one more suggestion? What about an S-team? So, now you have your A-team and, but you're like your pro team, your top ten players are your S-team. You have W-team.
Not now.
Or the Z-team, I love that.
Infinity S-team.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not being sarcastic, I really like that, the Infinity S-team.
Why not just make every, like, the platinum down the Academy, and then the diamonds, B-team, and the masters, A-team?
You say why, I say.
Because that makes like.
Let's, let's come back to that, um, after Space Lord has a chance to present on what is currently our B-team.
Alright.
No idea.
Ready for me to go, Morse?
Yeah, we can talk later in separate hours, after the meeting.
Okay, well, I guess I'll go ahead and do mine. Uh, so I think I know pretty much everybody, or most people that are at least in StarCraft, uh, but. I'm Space Lord, I'm running the B-team, have done so for a few months now, uh, ever since we kinda restructured. Uh, so, right now, um, we have seventeen people who are solid members of the B-team. Uh, we have nine people who are sort of recruits, or newer members, um. So, we have about twenty-six people uh, playing right now, which is pretty good, uh, considering, you know, not too long ago, it was much, much less. Um, as far as what we got going on, we've had uh, we've had a lot of events. Uh, so, for example, this month, uh, on the first Saturday, we had a B-team open, which went good. Uh, and then yesterday, we had our in-house tournaments go on. Um, the twenty-second of this month, we're gonna have a clan war, um, so we've really been um, stepping up the number of events and things slowly. Uh, as we sort of become more organized and stuff, and so I hope to see that continue. Um, yeah, I mean, uh, I guess as far as like what we've been going on in terms of like structure and things. Um, currently, myself and my lieutenants, we've been talking a lot about the, uh, the B-team structure and sort of. Um, what is the optimal way to use our time in terms of like practices, or tournaments and whatnot? And so, this is still something that's ongoing, uh, that we're figuring out. Um, we've also doing a little, uh, a little bit of restructuring of leadership, I'm starting to delegate responsibility a little more to lieutenants. And having those roles be a little more defined. Um, I know there's been some talk about uh. B-team getting a new third lieutenant, um, but uh, right now, I, we, we wanna make sure that we have clear ideas of. Sort of the role of each lieutenant before we, we begin adding any more just yet, but that's probably the way the B-team's going, we probably will end up. Needing more staff in the future, but just, just because I know it's something that's been brought up a few times, I just wanna make that clear. That that's on hold for a little bit, um. I think that's, I think that's about all I had for, for announcements right now. Um, so, any questions, anybody have?
You, you have a roster for the B-team?
Yep, I keep an updated roster, I update it usually two times a week, it's under the B-team forum.
Alright.
Pulling it up right now, yeah, and when are practices, Space Lord?
Uh, our two days are Thursday and Saturday at eight, uh, central. Uh, Thursdays are always just, you know, practices, um, you know, we pair up and play and. Uh, here lately, we've often had um, high-level players and, you know, kind of, you know, all the way up to, to masters and stuff coming in, helping out, which has really been awesome. Um, and then Saturdays, um, if we have an event, I put it on Saturday, so like our tournaments and stuff land there. Um, and if we don't have anything going on, then we practice on Saturday as well.
Somebody was asking what our, how our practices go, and what they're sort of uh, what the structure is, is that right, Bert?
Yeah, that's like, I, like, I'm not a StarCraft two player, I'm a Dota player, but, um. I've done a lot of this sort of stuff before, like before I joined Infinity for the Dota team, and I'm just curious what. You guys do have for a practice structure?
Sure.
Get some recommendations?
It's, it's primarily uh, the, the main component for how we do it is how many people we have. Uh, lately, we've been having a ton more, uh, the other day, we, I think we had fifteen, uh, so what we do when we have a lot of people like that. Is we usually split up into three groups of five or so, thereabouts, you know, it can be a little smaller, a little bigger. But um, and we do, do sort of an observation game, where, where two people are playing, and then three people are sort of uh, watching and, and. Coming up with ideas for what they can, those two players can do better. I've noticed, and I think Space Lord would agree, that any bigger than five people, you sort of waste players' times. Uh, because you, you might only get one or two games in a night, this way, uh, you can get some real feedback from other players, but at the same time, you're, you're still playing every, every. Other game, or every two-point-five games, whatever, however that works, um. If we're in a smaller group, if we have eight or ten players, typically, we will uh, we will split off into pairs of two. Um, oftentimes, players don't really care what they work on, they just wanna practice, so we'll, we'll do our best to get them what they need, but. If they don't uh, if they don't have any specific matchups in order, then we just, we just play. Um, and then we have our mentoring program, um, that's been sort of hit or miss, but a lot of times, we'll have diamond and up players come in. And help out with the uh, with either watching, or, or even sometimes playing, you, you know, the platinum level players in case of diamonds and. And giving up some tips on how they can do better and what they can do, uh, so that, that's sort of where we've been with our, with our practices, and. I'd say it's been, it's been pretty successful, um, I think as we get better, our, our, as we get more structured. Our goals for getting people mumped up to the A-team is gonna be more important and higher, because that A-team is, needs to uh, needs to keep having fuel. If you will, the Academy, and then moving into the masters, and we can't always get it from outside sources, so we'd like to get our players up there, uh, and sort of go it in-house. And we can't always get it from outside sources, so we'd like to get our players up there, uh, and sort of go it in-house. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Well said.
What's, like, I guess. Maybe it's not as much of a concern for the B-team, but I guess with the A-team, are you guys?
Vampy?
Wouldn't sit.
Yeah, like, can you, can you speak to the A-team?
And, you know, your, your structure, as far as like a weekly schedule and stuff?
We practice Tuesdays are optional, Friday, Saturday and Sunday mass on Sunday, um. For me, it's more of who shows up. If it's like four, four to six people, it's a P-mode. If more than that, we slip into groups depending on your points and league, and not league, but race. And pair each other up by what matchup you want help on. And what people need to learn. That's pretty much how it goes. I mean, grindout games for like. Say both three hours or more.
Okay. Have you gotten them to like specific strategy design at all?
Not yet, because we simply don't have, this is the. Only like third or fourth serious practice that we've had in a row and as in before that. It, we haven't had that many people show up.
We had a lot of people that were, were practicing solo. They didn't have a lot of structure. There was, uh, you know, you know, I am having trouble with my, my TBT. Play with me real quick, stuff like that. So, uh, this is, um. Pretty, pretty, I don't wanna say in its infancy because we have some really good players. Um, but as far as team structure, it is in our infancy.
Okay, cuz like, though they're different games, they do have similar ideals behind strategy.
Well, Bert, you guys, you guys did really well and, and any input that you have, um, to, to help us develop. Uh, the A-team is certainly welcome.
Like, the difference between Dota and Starcraft 2 is you have so much more invested with. A team and like coordinating like lots of things simultaneously. And, but I think taking. An approach to training in Starcraft 2. Where you're partnered with someone. And like they are your lane partners, or not lane partner, but they are like your practice partner. So you both coordinate your schedules together, cuz you said that for sometimes you've had issues with people actually making practices, right?
Yeah.
So by pairing off, you essentially, two people can work around each other's schedules. Or say four people can work around each other's schedules instead of forcing people to have to break their, some of their like real life commitments, which a lot of the time those can take precedence, right? And then you, by, by having sort of like that team cohesion between. Everyone, everyone sort of gets to realize how each other plays and as a result. You end up having. People who are very like used to playing against each other and then you can actually start to push out different strategies, so. One of the things that we did with the Dota 2 team is we, I tried to like get. One opponent that we played a fair bit and in our infancy, we, this was very successful because we were able to. Really try out new things against these teams that weren't. Maybe that's not necessarily as. Good as we were, but they were like very comfortable playing against us and they knew our playstyle and they were able to like challenge us because of that reason. Does that seem like something?
Well, the only thing, the only thing I would say about that is Starcraft 2 is more like a golf sport. Uh, what I mean is.
Yeah, no, no, I, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna steal this from you, Pyro, and yeah, definitely compare League of Legends and Dota 2. You know, they're more like a baseball or a football team, whereas a Starcraft team is more like a golf team or a tennis team. It, it's an individual sport or a track team. Yeah, exactly. You know, it's an individual sport, but we. Coordinate and work together and practice together as a team. And. I'd like to continue this conversation, um, after we, we get through all of our, our major topics of discussion today.
Yeah, sure, go ahead. I, I don't wanna take like.
No, no, you've got, I know you've got some good ideas, Bert, and I'm sure, uh, Vampy and the rest of us will wanna hear them. Um. Who we got next? Spacelord, you were wrapping up B-team. Anything else?
Um, yeah. I would just like to just kinda add on since we're talking about training and stuff is that, uh. Basically, I've been trying a lot of different styles of practice from like large groups to just one-on-one and stuff and kind of gathering a lot of feedback. Over the weeks and I've been putting together a lot of ideas on kind of optimal. Uh, ways to kind of get everyone's needs met because in. Uh, there's a lot of people who are different, uh, different things they're wanting to get out of a practice. To kind of sum it up, um, and so, uh, you know, this is something I'm gonna be wanting to talk with my leadership team about is. Sort of some of my new ideas on how to accommodate everyone so that. Practice is good for everybody and I don't want anybody to feel like it's, uh, you know. A waste of their time because we're doing it in a different way, um, so. Yeah, that's all I have.
I just wanna add, Vampy, you did a good job. GG Tracker was in here and he had to go. So you weren't, you weren't nervous, you didn't sound nervous, so congratulations.
I beg to.
Um, mind if I ask you a question?
Thanks, Raze. Look.
Hello.
Hello.
Yeah, go on.
Okay, um, so yeah, as people who've known me before, um, I kinda AFKed for three to four months. And I, I kinda had a rage moment and diverted myself from Diamond to Gold and switched races from Zerg to Protoss. And so I guess now I'm on the B-team and apparently things have changed and other things haven't. So coming back from back then, what should I do now to get back into the gist of things?
Um, Spacelord or one of his lieutenants can work with you off to the side and let you know what requirements they have for their team at this time. I believe, um, showing up for practices on a regular basis and things like that are part of the requirements. But you can check with them.
Oh yeah, I do have a question for Spacelord. Do you have the, um, do you have the requirements like Vampy did or the requirements for Vampy? That Vampy showed us is for the B-team too?
Um, well, we don't have skill requirements or anything like that because we're open from, you know, bottom bronze all the way to top plat, so. Everybody's welcome, um, the biggest thing is to stay on the roster and to be considered part of the team. And things, uh, I do expect you to show up to practice if, you know, and it's not exact, but you know, if you just kind of. Go AWOL, I'm gonna pull you off the roster, so. It's pretty straightforward.
Um, by the way, did you guys kick Obsidiosa?
Kick who?
Kick who? Obsidiosa.
Possibly.
Oh yeah, that guy's on vacation. I just wanted to play him that out for a week and he'll be back soon. So.
Cool. Good to know.
Yeah, and to, to kinda follow that too, and sorry if you hear my kids crying. I have lots of them and they're noisy, but, uh. Um, yeah, I mean, if, if you do, you know, like, I mean, things happen normally, you know, if you're gonna miss like, you know, a week or two or something, you just. Say it in the, uh, missing practice part of the B-team forum, that's fine, you'll, I'll leave you on the roster, you know, I'm not, I'm not crazy like that. Um, but if you just sort of disappear or whatever, I don't know what's going on, you know, I cut you off the roster. If you come back, you start showing to practice, you're like, hey, I'm back. You know, and it's, it's not a big deal, you'll, you'll get put back on the roster as soon as you start attending again.
Alright, cool.
Anything else for B-team?
Alright.
So now that David's gone, can we all take off our pants in party?
Wait, who's taking their pants off? What?
I actually do have one thing, if I can say something.
Yeah.
Um. I, you know, we've had a lot of questions about new members and about Clan Wars and one thing Spacelord didn't talk about, first of all, I'm Spinstar, Whitesaber's our other lieutenant, um. So we're, we're the two lieutenants on B-team and if you have any new member questions, feel free to send them to, to talk to me, I'm gonna help out with that part. And if you have any Clan War questions, Whitesaber's the one spearheading that part of it, so you can, uh. You know, if Spacelord isn't around, which he knows he may not be, given how busy he is right now with his four billion kids and his. PhD program and whatnot, that, uh, that you can find one of us almost all the time and we'll, we'll help you out, alright?
Or you can play Star Strikers with him and have even more fun.
One way.
Next topic is, uh, the tournaments. So. How many guys are happy with Sunday Mass?
Yeah.
I faked the mic.
I feel like the casting would be nicer, like if we could solidify that because. It seems every single week we have different people.
Oh, what?
And while that can be good, it's also confusing because I don't, I don't know.
We always have. Pyro's like the only person who actually sticks on with every single cast.
Yeah. Like we had Pyro, we had Izanagi, we had whoever was there, I think Gugak was there last week.
I was here today.
Yeah.
Now, let me just add to that is. Casting is a lot of work. I mean, you get tired after three, four hours of casting. And I feel like having, I mean, obviously having one set of casters is really good. But having multiple casters take over, and that's what I was thinking was. Having maybe half the ca, half the t, half the plays get casted by one person, or I meant by two people and then. Half the other plays get casted by another set of casters, whatever fluent, uh, groups we ever, we ha, we have or come up with. But I know like towards the end, towards the finals, if you've been casting for three, four, five hours, you're burnt and you're all like. It's the finals, you're supposed to be excited. But you really, you really, because you just talked for like.
Alright.
Five hours, but that's, that's something that Izanagi can help you with.
This, this is, uh, this is a really good point, um, we don't have a tournament department. We don't have a tournament team. The tournament team right now is me and whoever I grab. And as you can tell for like the Clan Wars and stuff like that, people have just been posting. Uh, threads on the casting forum saying, hey, I have an event, I need a caster. And if somebody doesn't get on there, Izanagi's gotta go headhunting, blah, blah, blah. It's been a while since we've had a list, an active list of people that are casting. We are going to get that solidified. On a flip note, uh, we've also are identifying some new members. That have the capabilities to stream, that are just getting into streaming, uh, some that have been casting. That used to cast but haven't been doing it for a while, so that's something that Izanagi's gonna be able to touch on later. But as far as the tournaments, we don't really have a staff, um. We have a partnership with Z33K that gives us a lot of extra kind of bells and whistles for making our tournaments. And we don't have a lot of. Um.
Push to talk, Morse, push to talk.
What, what? I am pushing. There's, there is no push to talk. It's on voice activation. You can't hear me? How about now? I'm sick. I'm sorry.
You can hear you, just like stop.
Oh, I'm having a stroke. I'm sick. I have to stop and breathe sometimes. Alright, so. We need a staff for each event, um, the B-team open that we had, not this last one, but the one before that was very successful. Because we had a designated caster that was set up ahead of time. It was all set. We had it all put together. We had a. Uh, two or three people. That were hanging out specifically for the recruitment. We had, um, two or three moderators that had access to the controls and stuff. With Zeke, if you're going to be an admin for one of our tournaments, you're also representing Zeke or Z33K. So. We can't just like hand it out to anybody. There is a small process for it, but if you would like to sign up. To be a moderator for one of those tournaments, please let me know. All I have to do is get some, basically just some paperwork and shoot it over to them and you're all set. We could really use a help on Sundays. It's in the afternoons. We almost always have a tournament on Saturday at some point in time. And then Clan Wars and things like that pop up, as you know, throughout. So if you're interested in doing any of that stuff, um, I will be hanging out in, uh, my room after this, um. The A-team will be hanging out in here, obviously, and, uh, we'll split up, et cetera, but. Um, that's really it for like the tournament side of things. Fundraising though, uh, thank you very much for those of you that are throwing money in, uh, we're in the, we're in the green or we're in the black, red.
You're in finance, Morse, you should know this.
I don't, I don't, everything's presented to me.
I think it's black.
It's in the black, yeah. We're making a profit if that, which means we're gonna be able. Well, we're, we have more money to spend on crap like tournaments and shit. So, thank you very much for those, uh, if you would like to make a donation for a specific event like, uh, some members have done in the past. Uh, just make the donation and then get ahold of me and let me know how you want it to be allocated, so if you'd like to fund a League of Legends tournament. If you'd like to fund a Starcraft tournament or if you'd like to do something else, just let us know. And, uh, we'd be happy to look into it and see how we can allocate the funds for what you want to make happen. We are looking at merchandise again, um.
T-shirts, that was cool.
Most of the startup cost is about three to three hundred and fifty dollars, so.
A-ching!
Yep. Turns around, basically. If we get bulk, we can get a bunch of shirts in one size, about a hundred of them. And they're about ten bucks a piece. But we gotta buy them, you know, we gotta put the money upfront to buy them and then some person would have to distribute them from their garage or whatever. Or there's a couple services that. You put money down and they create inventory for you and they run a store for you. And they take some of the overhead, so we wouldn't get all of the profit, we would only get half of it. So there are some ideas and some abilities that are out there, but when it comes down to it, we need startup costs. I went over the numbers the other day and we have what's not allocated for tournaments for the rest of June. We're probably about. Two hundred, two hundred and fifty short, but we need the money for the tournaments and stuff. The five dollars a week. For the Sunday Mass is covered. The in-house and the in-house A-team and the in-house B-team was covered by a donor. And GG Tracker is supplying the other prizes, so if we wanna keep having cash prizes or we wanna make bigger cash prizes. If we want to diversify the, the prize pool, things like that, um. Talk to me, uh, make a donation and we can get some stuff going. Any questions or thoughts on the, uh. Tournament side of things and fundraising? Bum, bum, bum. Great. League of Legends people?
Yes.
What's going on?
Um. Nothing much.
Um, our, our like, our section of the League of Legends part is pretty casual. We don't really. Any ranked kind of things going on right now, so.
Um, if anyone's interested, we could start it up and do that with you if you'd want. Um, we're always looking to play with new people. I mean, if you guys ever are down to play with any of us, we aren't gonna turn you down.
I'm afraid of League of Legends players.
Yeah. Yeah, that's probably a good thing.
I like playing.
What does that mean?
As in like, so it would probably be.
Professional Star Strikers.
Yeah, Star Strikers. Because there, there are Star Strikers tournaments and it's actually, it's actually a skill-based game. And, uh, I dominate as SCV. I'm probably easily the best person here.
I wanna see SCV per, versus Probe.
Alright, alright, League of Legends.
Yeah.
Off topic?
Um. Get a, a rank League of Legends team?
Alright, so I've, I have a question for you guys, um. Is there, I have a ques, I have a question for you guys. Is, um, anybody here signed up for the, um, all leagues casual team? That they're trying to put together?
Uh, I didn't sign up for it, but I tried out.
I've yet to do anything cuz, yeah, I've been busy.
Don't look at me, I've got a friggin' department to run.
I've been mainly waiting for Nas to be on when I'm on league to see, you know, what's going on.
Okay. So, um. Do you guys, um, who was talking earlier? People are poking me.
Oh, um, me and Ori.
Okay, the Morse.
Ori.
Decorum!
Decorum! Ori, thank you, thank you, Sergeant Morse. Ori, um, do you have Nas's Skype?
No, no. Um, I don't. Oh, the rich man does. He's like, he's like in our group kind of, so, yeah.
Yeah, the ri, you guys found him?
Yeah, um, he came home. He's actually our adopted child, so.
Yay!
It's a long story, but if you, if you listen to the description, they'll say he's our son.
Yeah.
Dude, that's great. See, like, League of Legends is a happy family. Any, alright, well, you guys get in contact with him. Um, I, he's putting a lot of effort in. I guess he couldn't make. Um, I, he's putting a lot of effort in, I guess he couldn't make it, he showed me what he had, uh, prepared to talk about, um, basically, he's got a, a gold team in development and a silver team in development, so if you're within one of those leagues, um, get ahold of him, let him know what's going on.
We feel like we're worthy of silver, but I'm stuck in bronze, and it sucks.
I'm actually on the silver team.
It happens, man. I got dropped to silver.
I can help you guys with that, sure, don't worry.
Wait, you're in silver now, Morse?
Not.
I was gonna say, whoa!
Oh, okay.
Alright, anything else for League of Legends?
Um, well, do, any guys have any questions? Cuz.
Alright, if you have any questions, the League of Legends guys can be found in the League of Legends rooms.
User joined your channel.
Down below us. And I hope they, I wa- I hope they hang out, though.
I do have a comment.
Those guys are pretty cool.
Um, as far as, you know, tournaments and, um, League of Legends goes, I don't think we've talked too much about setting up tournaments for League of Legends in a long while. And I know Fritz wanted to go be a dedicated League of Legends caster. And I think you guys should get the, you know, Fritz as well, he's a pretty good caster.
I would love to cast League of Legends.
Oh.
Should we add the League of Legends group on there?
Fritz, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here, man.
Okay. So maybe later on, he, that he can go and talk to you guys about it. I know, um, I know we haven't developed a tournament yet, but I know we can all talk about, uh, ha- setting up a tournament.
Um, Ori?
Yes?
Uh, thoughts on Ultimate Bravery, um, in, in the new edition?
Why, why would we do that?
Alright, nevermind, man.
Um, well, I don't know, it'd be fun sometimes, but, uh, um, basically, Ultimate Bravery is, it's a website that assigns you a random build with a random champion, and yeah, it's just, it's pretty fun, but very ineffective doing it in solo queue, stuff like that.
Um, and there's a chain of, uh,
Solo queue.
No, I never would.
For Ultimate Bravery where people had to use Ultimate Br- uh, bravery builds, would you, would you be down for casting that?
Um, I don't, I don't know a whole lot about that, I, I know a whole, I know enough about League of Legends, I'd, like I said, I'd have to get a chance to, you know, get back into it a little bit, because it's been a while since I played League, but, uh, but, uh, yeah, I'm not familiar with that particular, is it mod or what?
Um, no, it's just the, I, I guess you could call it a play style, maybe? I don't know what the technical term for it would be, but, um, if
Yeah, uh, it's
Yeah, I don't know, um, if you, uh, just talk to us in, uh, our FHS team channel after.
Alright, man.
Dude, I'm looking, I'm down, I wanna, I wanna participate in this tournament.
Fritz, I can help you with League casting, cuz it's what I mainly do for my YouTube shit.
Ultimate bravery.
So, yeah.
Alright, man.
Alright.
Anyway.
Izanagi?
What?
Your production department, what's up, what's up with casting?
Ah! It's the same.
You've got a soapbox, buddy. No one's gonna take it away from you for at least five minutes.
For at least five minutes, I'm not gonna need five minutes to get my point across. The problem with the casting department is the same that it's always been, lack dedicated, reliable individuals.
Whoa!
Pyro, you don't count, you are a marketing department head, you are not a caster.
What am I?
What do you have to do for casting? Just talk, cuz I, I'd be down for that.
No, it's more than that.
A little more than that.
I thought.
You thought what?
I thought, I thought I was both.
You are, but I can't have you do casting department things, I can only have you cast.
You're talking about department things, not actual dedication.
I have a, I have a, 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 I can go AAA for about four minutes and still count that, right? Uh, I have a plan to get the department, I don't have the people for it, plain and simple.
What's your plan?
I guess we could talk later.
I've got, I've got six shows on the lineup, I've got three that are live, I don't have the personnel or the manpower.
Who, wait, someone had a question for Izanagi? No?
I don't know.
Alright, so Izanagi, tell us what you need, tell us what you need.
I need dedicated, reliable people.
What do you need them to do?
Uh, let's see, I need editors, I need organizers, I need well, I need graphic designers, but that's a different thing entirely.
I have no idea how to do that.
Uh, I need hosts, I need casters, I need streamers.
That's all. That, alright.
I guess I'll have to figure out how to do that before I actually
And I need loose tents.
That, that's something to go off of, um. I would say, since you need all that, that's exactly what you should be talking about. I mean, that's a lot, you need a lot, so you need, I think we need to be organized, come up with a thought with, uh, the top people of, that, that wanna do this. And maybe, uh, start a forum post about organizing the casting department that way.
I've started many forum posts about this, the turnout is always pitiful.
My big problem, I won't go on the forum very much.
Yeah, the tu- turnout with, the problem is the turnout whenever I advertise, hey, you guys wanna be a caster, it's always pitiful, I get two people, maybe.
Where do you, where can you recruit casters from? Because most of the people that come to Infinity Gaming are coming to, at least on the StarCraft side, they're coming to play.
That's the problem.
We're lucky enough to get some players, I think, that also enjoy casting, we got Pyro and Fritz, and I think there's a fair amount of people, no, maybe not enough, but a fair amount of people that can, can be a part of it. But where can we go find people? Is there a form for that? I have no idea, but you would think that that wi- with all the casting that happens, there's certainly places where people talk about strategy and how to do it, and and practice and that sort of thing, where, does that exist? And if it does, we should go there, and recruits people specifically to cast.
Do they have to know how to do it before
No.
Tried to help? Okay, then tie me up.
Now, are you just talking about casting games? Or are you talking about casting?
Okay, here's what I need. I've got I need people to cast live games, i.e. the tournaments. I need people who want to stick around on stream, we, we got Starcade on Thursday, I've got a rotating squad there, I've got four more shows that are gonna end up just like that. If you want to be in charge of your own show on this thing, you say the word and be reliable, and you will have it.
Hold on, Izanagi, about that.
Yeah, Shadow, I know.
No, 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 I was thinking with the Tuesday show, I'm gonna try and do it every week, I know I've been slagging on that, but why not alternate between Dota and League? Get the League community in there as well.
I like that.
Your show, Shadow. Yes, please, okay.
Uh, the thing is, I always saw two reasons, one, we ha- we always had a bigger Dota presence than League, always.
Um, and I was going to try and farm that for us, uh, with the lack of that, there's no reason. The other thing is, a lot of people know how to play League, not a lot of people know how to play Dota.
It's kind of the same principles, though.
Yeah, they're pretty similar.
I really feel like this would also get the League of Legends community, uh, involved in Infinity Gaming, just as much as Dota being as much as that.
Yeah, um.
I really like that, because we only have five days out of the week, or, well, I mean, we have seven days.
Six and a half, actually.
Whatever. We only ha- we only stream five days for shows, and then two out of the seven days are tournaments.
Yeah, there's a reason I keep saying no, and it's the same reason that it was then. You are also the biggest troll I've ever seen.
I mean, I feel like we can talk about that somewhere else.
Yeah, well, anyway.
If you need bodies, you can, you know.
I need, I need reliable bodies, I can get bodies, but I can't get bodies that are gonna be here for more than a week.
I'll be here more than a week.
A lot of us have been here.
Get in contact with me, you can totally do that.
So if I say, alright, so, hey,
everybody, everybody who's going to be helping out Izanagi with the casting, I actually, um, I found a new feature today in TeamSpeak. We're gonna create a, um, a room for casters, it's gonna have a higher audi- audio quality than the other rooms, it's gonna carry a better bitrate to help with, uh, the casting. So, I want you guys to go ahead and go down to Izanagi's Emporium, once we're all done here, and get organized, figure out what days who's available, etcetera, and let's start moving on this, sound good?
Yeah, that sounds good.
Yeah, alright, after the meeting, anybody who wants to cast, host, stream, etcetera, 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 my room.
I'll be down there.
Uh, go, yeah, you'll be down there, that's one.
I'll be there.
One's better than none.
I'll be there.
Oh, by the way, I know, uh, Izanagi's not just casting, he's also production as well, so I guess, yeah, that's what we talked about, as well, just remember that.
Oh, yeah, I know.
So League of Legends, it would be, uh, if you wanna do something more with the community as well, I would suggest going to Izanagi.
Yeah, um, he's for the casting, right?
No, well, he's, I mean, he's, he's, yes, with the casting, but he's also with production and shows and tournaments and
Can we just say content, production?
Anything that doesn't have to do with playing for a team, come to me.
If it goes to, onto YouTube. If it goes on, if it goes on the YouTube.
I'm kind of interested in casting League, so.
Good, down there after this meeting.
Okay.
Cool. Alright.
If we're done with that, can I go take a piss real quick?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cuz I di- I didn't want to miss any of that.
Also, I have a curiosity about how long this meeting is going to be continuing on, cuz I have to go to work pretty soon, so despite wanting to be a part of the casting, I may not be able to make the
Fritz, you're already on the hook, so. I know where to get ahold of you.
Alright, Pyro, public relations.
Yay! Okay, guys, since all the boring stuff is gone, and all the, you know, the good stuff.
Kiss my ass, you little flammable panda.
Oh, okay, as you guys know, I am Pyro Panda, I am the recruiting and marketing lead. And I just wanna say, this whole group, Infinity Gaming, has come a long way since the newly established leadership. And when I first joined many moons ago, I saw a passionate group of people from all stretches of the esports community.
Okay, stop kissing us right now, death dance brass tacks.
No, 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 he made me, he made me.
I've never seen any sweat like this, I gotta say.
See, look, guys.
We do still have, um, the new coaching to go over, as well as graphic design, but we're in the home stretch, so take it away, Panda.
Exactly, and I just wanted to say that I was instantly captured, I felt like I wanted to help the community grow so much more. I mean, there was just so many people doing so much for the clan, and it, you know, it, like, like we said, we do it because we love the sport, we love esports, we love gaming. And it just, it made me feel like this was the strength of Infinity. So, what do I do? Alright, what I do is, I basically go on social networks, a, or i.e. whatever, uh, like Team Liquid, or let's say, I mean, even LinkedIn, or I, just so many social networks, Facebook, uh, BluePost. Uh, I know, I don't know too much about League of Legends, but if you guys wanted to help me out with that department, I could definitely help you guys out as well. Same thing goes for Dota. Uh, another thing I've done was, I look for sponsors and partnerships, I look for guests. Uh, I, I try to talk to, I mean, I try to tell people about zeke.com, I mean, these are important things that we need to, to do, to grow, and pr- uh, you know, prosper. So, i- i- and anyone can really help me out with this, this isn't just a me thing, I mean, this is me as the head honcho, as the king of promotion, marketing, and just recruiting, but it, it's, it's a little bit of like a whole bunch of hands in one pot, and I'm allowed to touch people's hands.
No, you're not.
And it steers them in the right direction.
Can touch my hand anytime.
This just got really kinky.
As, as far as donators go, um, I, I wanna congratulate you guys for donating the com- to the community, and it would really all your donations really will go to the next level, and I hope other people outside of the community donate as well. And I know I've seen, like, Frutus, if you guys remember the tournament today, what they basically, what he did was, he's a comebacker, he loves our tournament so much, he loves the, the casting.
Map hacking.
Even after we accused him of map hacking, he comes and he plays again, just because of just the production in general. So, hold on, I mean, events, lo- let's talk about events.
Frutus is actually a pro player too, from Quantic, he's in our academy.
What happened?
Oh no, I was just saying, Frutus is a actual professional gamer.
See, we, we got a lot of, was that real? Oh, sorry. Was that real Quantic? Because if that was real Quantic.
That's, that's their Quantic academy, I played their barcode in the first, uh, in the first Sunday mass, and got my ass owned, and they are so Quantic.
Now, let me add to that, I, we casted Frutus, Quantic Frutus, and their barcodes the entire time. I mean, this is, this is a big deal, this is fun. Uh, as far as that goes, you, our events are getting bigger and bigger, and we know we're getting more and more people to view, like, when we first started, we had ten viewers, and seven viewers, and eight viewers. And now we are somewhere around fifteen, twenty, twenty-six, I, I don't know, I mean, there's, it's not just outsiders, again, that strengthen our community, it's the community within our community, if that makes sense. And then we defend it, it's, it's us looking at our own streams, I was streaming the other day, and I got twenty-six viewers out of nowhere, half of them are you guys. I mean, this is a big deal.
Are you crying?
Eh, no.
Three things I am, Ori.
Just got to throw it out there, they're all just copying my trend of watching Infinity streams.
Wait, Mumbo Jumbo from YouTube?
Okay.
Alright, so anyway, Pyro's talking.
Alright, so again, if you guys wanna help me out, please tell me new ideas, social sites that you want, want me to get into, put my hand in, in the cookie jar and start figuring it out, and brushing through the BS. Uh, another thing would be Twitch Productions. I would love to promote your guys' channel, and I know it's really easy. I just need you guys to tell me what you guys want, I'm here for you, and you guys do what you guys do.
We're here for you too.
Thank you. Now, again, I love, what, what I love to do is, I love to get guests and sponsors, if you guys have any ideas that you want me to get ahold of, like Vampy, where I'm told, told me about GG Tracker, hey, I like GG Tracker, really, Vampy? Really, okay, cool. Next thing you know, I go, I send David a message, and I wish David was here to listen, but I sent David a message, and he responded with a positive, uh, feedback, he said, well, I, we can sponsor. Then I talked to Morse, Morse was more than gladly tell me that there are more di- there are more than two ways to go about looking for sponsors, I mean, we gotta sponsor for our tournaments, guys, this is strong. This is good.
User joined your channel.
It's just, I mean, as far as guests, though, I just messaged Carbot Animations, he couldn't make it to last Friday because it was, uh, short, uh, it was really quick, and he didn't have time to get ready for it, but he said that he would be honored for an interview, if you guys have any ideas and any idea how to get a ho- hold of people, like, if, I would love to find Day Nine, I would love to get Husky, um, Artosis.
Yeah, we're not gonna Artosis.
I don't care, I don't care.
So.
This guy, Pyro's.
We got Carbot.
You guys got an idea?
Nah, nah.
Alright, so you guys? You guys?
Why? Why?
Alright, so you guys have an idea of what Pyro does, and where he could use some help, so if there's something that, uh, you wanna join Pyro with, where can they find you, Pyro?
Um, I'm gonna create a channel.
Alright.
And I'm gonna be in it tonight, and that was actually my last thing I was gonna say, I said, any questions? And thank you, that's it, that's my, that my thing, you can clap now.
We can call it Pyromania.
Yes, sir, for Ori, for real strong.
Why is there three Ori's, the fuck?
Oh, um, everyone from FHS team steals my name sometimes.
At least there's Ori one.
Yeah, um, we are one.
Also, um, if he can get Carbot Animations, um, the League of Legends team, we can get Athena. We're gonna get him.
No, I don't wanna Athena.
Stop it!
Athena is, Athena is the best gamer in the world.
I hate her.
Alright.
But I'd love to get Athena.
The last thing we were gonna talk about was the coaching department, Gugak and Wave, we're gonna cover that, uh, I don't see either of them in here.
Buddy joined your channel.
Which is kinda frustrating, but Vampy told me that he would step up and explain what's going on there.
Well, well, to start the coaching department, I'm not sure if you actually know about it yet. I know, we kind of, maybe leasing stuff as we have little meetings or in-call meetings. But what we're trying to do is have it so that the coaches, that when you get a profit, it goes mainly towards Infinity, like an eighty-twenty split, eighty for Infinity, twenty for them.
We've unionized.
Yes, we have. Channel's edited.
I made the, I made the audio here.
Guys, I'm handing Pyro.
Oh my god. Anyway, back on the coaching subject. I know Gugak has been really, well, trying to be active, within the community. And he's been coaching members here and there when he can. I know he did a DNB team. And he did it during B-team practice a couple times and off of D-B-team practice. We've been trying to, I talked to some of my players and about one, if they want to do coaching or not. And we'll try to get a mix of races, a nice mix of races. That are on the pro team or, well, S-team, never gonna call it now. But yeah, that's so much all I got for coaching right now.
In the meantime, if you are interested in coaching or being a mentor, you'll notice a few folks in the chat, actually only one right now, Jerome's got it. Um, we don't have enough mentors that are online. So if you are somebody who likes to provide coaching and insight and helping people, would you please let one of us know? So we can. Would you let somebody know so we can go out and get you your nifty little hat like Jerome does right here?
I feel like I'm a mentor.
Yeah.
Alright. Panda Pyro, anything to add to the conversation? No? What about you, Panda?
No.
Panda Pyro's, uh, harassed.
Whoa!
Ow.
Dude, that, that noise.
That's offensive.
That was Ori.
What? I'm Ori. No.
I am Ori.
I am Orica.
I am a silent.
See, this is what I'm talking about, League of Legends players.
Stop, stop.
Okay.
Alright.
So I mean, that's the end of this?
We are working on some graphic design stuff. Yes, that's the end of this. Let's go to.